So with this, we will begin our recognition. Recognition. Retirement of Chief Butler, Chief Shawn Butler. Mr. DeGardt, would you lead us off, please?
That was quick, Mayor. That was a quick handoff. Thank you.
You'll learn after a while.
I'll keep my comments brief. I know we have a lot of folks here that want to speak. And what I really want to say, I'll say privately to the chief. But back in 2016, I was new to this position as city manager and was tasked by the council with interviewing candidates and promoting a new police chief. We had several outstanding candidates from our Auburn Police Department ranks, and there were many factors that were considered in choosing the right person at the right time. Shawn Butler was promoted to police chief and hit the ground running. Chief Butler started his new assignment with energy and enthusiasm and embraced the motto, "Expect Excellence," in both his personal endeavors and for the Auburn Police Department. During his tenure, Chief Butler tackled many issues and still found time to complete his master's degree and FBI training. He oversaw an effort to credential the Auburn Police Department and was visible and approachable in our community. The chief's early efforts to collaborate with other agencies and engage the entire community proactively have improved the delivery of law enforcement services in the city of Auburn and set the tone for meaningful and productive dialogue in our community when so many other communities were struggling to establish mutual respect and communication. Looking back, it's very clear, it's evident that Chief Butler was the right person at the right time to guide the Auburn Police Department forward. So with that brief introduction to things, thank you, Chief Butler, for your professional contributions, your leadership, your friendship, and good luck on your next endeavor. Successfully leading any organization requires not only competency in the task, but more importantly, I think, respect and trust shared between all those parties involved. And cooperation and feedback from our officers in the street is important and vital to improving service delivery in the city of Auburn. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to a couple of our union officials, Officer Chris Major and Officer John Bries, to say a few words.
We are done as of last week. But we're still going to stand in for today because we have all our experience with Shawn. Hi, everybody. I'm John. This is Chris, for those that don't know us. So, hey, what's up? So, my mother always taught me that if you don't have anything nice to say, then don't say anything at all. Thank you. Just kidding. Sorry, I thought this was a roast. Oh, my God, my eyes are horrible. I see a lot of important faces here, which makes sense. For what it's worth, coming from a washed-up, almost-retired city employee, almost-retired city employees, thank you all for being here. I know that your attendance means a lot to Shawn, and it means a lot to our department and to our city as well. In recent weeks, the PD has endured several retirements. It's definitely strange seeing all the people you've worked with your entire career walk out the door for the last time. As a union, we've always believed that every job is important, that everyone working is essential, and we're always careful to consider another person's shoes. But what we do is different. Our job is inherently dangerous, and as cops, that's something we were all willing to accept, and to a degree, maybe it was something we craved. We're trained to be careful, to stay safe, to always watch our backs. But as police officers and firefighters, I see you out there, I'll include you, we're also responsible for each other's safety and each other's backs. This unique element of our professions creates a rare dynamic, and by means of that dynamic, lifetime bonds are formed. As union board members, we're proud to say we work for Chief Butler. The relationship between a labor union and an administration is probably most accurately described as complicated. Inevitably, we've had our battles, but with the exception of a time or two, our work sessions were always productive. However, I do have a distinct memory of dragging Chris out of Shawn's office one day, pleading with him to shut his mouth. The only thing redder than the sun that morning was Shawn's face, and of course, Valano just sat there laughing. Chief Butler was most definitely thorough but not unwilling to compromise. He was slightly particular but not completely unbreakable. A little by practice and a lot by nature, he's a multitasking extraordinaire. He could listen to radio transmissions from three different departments while typing an email, while he read a book, as he did push-ups while riding his Peloton bike, and he'd retain everything. His devotion is evident, his drive is apparent, his successes are earned, and his future limit is the sky. Shawn, I speak for all of us when I say it's been fun and a pleasure to work with you and an honor to work for you. Do not forget August 7th. Make sure you visit Valano's food truck and call Bag &amp; Nichols for all your redemption needs. Congrats on your retirement, buddy. And we're kind of triple booked, so we got to skip out of here. We weren't going to miss it, though.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. I'm in awe Chris Major had a microphone and chose not to use it.
We're going to have a second round.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Senator Pam Helming. Senator, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor Quill. Thank you for this opportunity to recognize the chief. Chief, I mean, you're leaving big shoes to fill. You have been an incredible asset and incredible leader for this entire community. I wanted to make sure that was reflected in the proclamation done by the New York State Senate, but sometimes the way government operates, right? You go A to Z one way and don't deviate. So typically, proclamations come out with chronological order of your accomplishments. But again, I wanted to do something that was more heartfelt and truly reflective of how this community feels about you. So if it's okay, Mayor, I'd like to read the proclamation.
Please, please do.
Honoring Chief Shawn I. Butler upon the occasion of his retirement from the Auburn Police Department. Whereas a great state is only as great as those individuals who perform exemplary service on behalf of their community, whether through unique achievements in professional or other endeavors, or simply through a lifetime of good citizenship. And whereas members of law enforcement exemplify the power of human compassion and the strength of the American spirit through actions of the most heroic magnitude, their sacrifices and their selfless dedication merit tribute and recognition by all citizens of this great country. And whereas law enforcement officers not only provide a critical service but also engage in other activities of great benefit and importance to the communities they serve. And whereas attendant to such concern, I, New York State Senator Pamela A. Helming, am proud to honor Chief Shawn Butler upon the occasion of his retirement from the Auburn Police Department in Auburn, New York. And whereas Chief Butler rose through the ranks at the Auburn Police Department and was formally appointed as police chief on June 15, 2016, his assignments have included parole officer, grant writer, and administrator, member of the department's emergency response team, evidence technician, and field training officer. And whereas Chief Butler is a shining example of an exceptional leader, always there with his positive, supportive, and upbeat attitude to lend a hand and help those in need, and doing so quietly without seeking attention or recognition. And whereas it takes a special dedication, a strong desire to help others, and a tireless sense of community to forsake precious time with family and friends to respond to the signal that a neighbor is in need, Chief Butler throughout years of devoted service to the Auburn community has gone above and beyond the call of duty. And whereas when individuals of such noble aims and accomplishments are brought to our attention, it is important to publicly proclaim and commend them for the edification and emulation of others. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, New York State Senator Pamela A. Helming, honor Chief Shawn Butler upon the occasion of his retirement from the Auburn Police Department.
Thank you, Senator. Now, we'd like to introduce Senator John Mannion. Senator, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think the representatives of the city of Auburn would sometimes agree that it's best to have two senators, and I think a day like today, it is good to have two senators. We may disagree at other times, and I appreciate Senator Helming being here and, of course, am proud to join her today. I was a union leader as well, and I listened to the officers speak, and I will say that I think they know, and I hope that I know, in everything that I've heard and everything that I've experienced in our short relationship with each other, that this is what true leadership looks like. And when you lead with integrity, words aren't going to matter because actions do. And that's clear with the respect that you have, chief, and I appreciate you having me here today. I also personally, as someone who has family who are members of law enforcement and who has friends that are active in retired law enforcement, it has been a very challenging year and beyond, as you know. And when you lead with integrity and strong leadership, we end up with positive results. And we can find that we serve our entire community, and I believe that you did that. So I thank you and all law enforcement officers for putting themselves in harm's way every day to keep our community safe. And with that, I also have a proclamation for you, which is, whereas members of law enforcement who give their time and energy to serve in the best interests of their communities are an asset beyond remuneration and cannot be sufficiently extolled. And whereas attendant to such concern, I, New York State Senator John W. Mannion, am proud to honor Chief Shawn I. Butler upon the occasion of his retirement from the Auburn Police Department in Auburn, New York. And whereas after being hired by the Auburn Police Department as a recruit on July 15, 1996, Chief Butler rose through the ranks of the department and was formally appointed police chief on June 15, 2016. And whereas in 2018, Chief Butler graduated from the FBI National Academy, which benefited the Auburn Police Department and inspired the officers under his command. And whereas, under Chief Butler's leadership, the department formed a high number of community partnerships and received a low number of personnel complaints, which enforces the idea of a culture change, which Chief Butler believes has taken place during his past four years. And whereas Chief Butler announced his retirement during a presentation to social justice groups that was livestreamed to the public and had informed city officials and his staff of the decision on July 15, 2020, which was the first day of his 25th year with the department. And whereas retirement comes as an opportune time for Chief Butler personally, as his youngest of four children is graduating from Auburn High School, and his second youngest will finish her undergraduate degree next spring. Meanwhile, Chief Butler will finish his own master's degree in law enforcement and public safety leadership from the University of San Diego. And whereas Mayor Quill, who has known Chief Butler since serving as Auburn's fire chief, praised him for his community outreach as concerns rose about police brutality and systemic racism over the last several years while serving as Auburn Police Department spokesperson, Chief Butler demonstrated excellent communication skills and addressed such concerns appropriately. And whereas such service, which is truly the lifeblood of our community and state, is deserving of our most sincere recognition, now therefore be it proclaimed that I, New York State Senator John Mannion, honor Chief Shawn I. Butler upon the occasion of his retirement from the Auburn Police Department. Thank you, Chief Butler.
Thank you, Senator. Next, I'd like to introduce former Assemblyman Gary Finch. Mr. Finch, do you have a few words for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, I have no whereas in my remarks. So you'll have to bear with me, Shawn. Nobody cares. Nobody cares how much you know until they know how much you care. That's Teddy Roosevelt. It's also a good explanation for Chief Shawn Butler's success here in Auburn. By emphasizing compassion, connection, communication, Shawn has earned the trust of this community. We know that Shawn cares about us and that he loves the city of Auburn. Shawn proved to be a brilliant administrator and a knowledgeable law enforcement official. He set a standard for excellence. He supported extensive training and continuing education in the department. He graduated from the FBI's National Academy while serving as chief. When the leader of an organization walks the walk, it's contagious. Shawn's integrity, tireless work ethic, and respect for public service permeates the department. And that is why the people, the men and women of the Auburn Police Department maintain their promise to keep their mission to protect and serve. Before I go on, I want to thank Lori, Shawn's wife, and all the police officers and law enforcement people, their wives as well. Being a police officer, a law enforcement person, when you leave the house in the morning, you never know whether you will see your loved one again. So I appreciate everything all the wives have done to support their husbands and significant others. There are extreme voices across the land that would have you believe that Americans have a stark choice to make between public safety or social justice. Shawn Butler's incredible work as chief of police is a more effective rebuttal of that kind of cynicism than anything I could say this afternoon. Thank you for everything, Shawn. Thank you for protecting our families. Thank you for your commitment to transparency, reform, and public safety. Thank you for standing up for the members of this department, for marginalized communities, and the rule of law. Most of all, thank you for making sure that Auburn is a city where everyone can feel safe, valued, and empowered.
Next, I'd like to introduce Patrick Cameron, representing Assemblyman John Lamond. Patrick, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Quill and the city council for extending the invitation for this event this evening. Unfortunately, Assemblyman Lamondes could not attend the event, but he did ask me to come in his place to recognize Chief Butler on his retirement. He has drafted a New York State Assembly Citation that will go into the New York State Legislative Proceedings. Unfortunately, the good thing about this is Senator Helming and Senator Mannion already said all the good things in there, so I don't have to do much of the talking. So I just wanted to read a little bit of this citation. It's commending Police Chief Shawn I. Butler upon the occasion of his retirement after 25 years of service to the Auburn Police Department. Whereas, within every community of the state of New York, there are certain outstanding individuals who, by virtue of their commitment and dedication, command the respect and admiration of the community for their exemplary contributions and service on behalf of others, and it is the intent of this resolution that those public servants who unselfishly devote their lives to the preservation of order and protection of others are worthy and do full praise of their commitment and noble endeavors. Now therefore be it resolved that as a duly elected member of the Assembly of the state of New York, I commend Police Chief Shawn I. Butler upon the occasion of his retirement after 25 years of distinguished service to the city of Auburn and wish him continued success in all of his future endeavors. And be it further resolved that a copy of this citation be transmitted to Police Chief Shawn I. Butler upon his retirement after 25 years.
Next, I'd like to introduce our sheriff, Sheriff Brian Skank. Sheriff, please.
Good evening, everyone. Wow, you're really going to retire. When you told me a year ago, I didn't think this day would ever come, but it's actually here. Congratulations. It's an honor for me to address all of you here this evening as we wish Chief Butler well and send him off on his next adventure. Thank you, Mayor Quill and council, for reaching out to me and giving me this opportunity. I really appreciate it. I've had the distinct pleasure of working with Chief Butler throughout my career, my entire law enforcement career. We took similar career paths that connected us initially while working in our respective road patrol divisions coming on in the late 90s, followed by our criminal investigations time, and then into leading each of our agencies. I can tell you that I learned very early on that then Officer Butler was the go-to person if I ever needed assistance from the Auburn Police Department. It was clear to me right away that he valued not only our individual partnership but that of our agencies working closely together. In later years, while assigned to our criminal investigations division, I worked closely numerous times with the Detective Bureau of APD, and while it was then led by Lieutenant Butler. It was during that period that I really got to know who Shawn Butler was. I personally watched him oversee some criminal investigations that were not only unimaginably difficult for the victims and their families, but for his agency and our entire community. You could not have placed a better person in charge during those years. Lieutenant Butler led with compassion, professionalism, and the highest degree of integrity, the ideals that he has continued to lead with as chief. Whenever members of our agency or I needed help during the same timeframe, Lieutenant Butler was always more than willing to assist in any way he could, and that didn't change once he was sworn in as the chief of police. Since becoming sheriff, I've relied on Chief Butler more than ever, someone to bounce an idea off of, get an opinion from, or sometimes just to vent. So the next chief in line is going to need to make some time for me to call and blow off some steam, whoever that might be, occasionally after hours. Truth be told, venting actually sometimes went both ways, but not too often, right, chief? I've always valued the working partnership our agency has had with the city of Auburn, the Auburn Police Department, and especially Chief Butler. I can't think of anyone that I would have rather partnered with during the course of my career, and especially the last few years. If you look at the Auburn Police Department shoulder patch, the very one worn by Chief Butler today, you will see it reads, "Expect Excellence." Chief, I grew to expect excellence from you each and every day, as did the members of our community, not because of the words on a patch, because that is what you consistently deliver each and every day. Your work has and will continue to enhance the quality of life in the city of Auburn, the county of Keuga, and beyond long after you are gone. Mission accomplished, job well done, chief. I can't thank you enough on behalf of all the members of the Keuga County Sheriff's Office and those we serve. I wish you a long, happy, and healthy retirement, and don't forget to send me some postcards. Thank you, everybody.
Next, we have Captain Dave Stevens, New York State Police, representing New York State Police. Captain, welcome.
About five years ago, I was here to see you on your way in. Sad to see you on your way out, and I'm not sure that it's acceptable that only after 25 years, you're letting him go. Some of us stayed much longer. Early in my career, I learned to surround myself with good people. And doing that brings you up also when you don't know the way, you have the right people to ask. I was a senior investigator in charge of criminal investigations here at the Auburn Station. Shawn was the lieutenant in charge of CID or the detectives here at Auburn Police Department. Many occasions, I would call him, say, "Hey, I need some help. I don't know the people of the city like you do. Can you give me somebody to help me because I think this crime outside the city has some connections in?" On occasion, he would call me, he'd have something going on in the city, and say, "Hey, can you help me?" Many of those occasions, the sheriff and I both would be sitting in his office, working through a difficult case with him. Thank you very much for allowing us to come in and help you serve the people of the city here. I think the state police has an interesting role. We provide police to the rural areas of the state, but obviously, a lot of crime comes back into cities as well. We like to be able to come in and help. Shawn surely allowed that. One little funny story I have to tell, and I have many, but I'm only going to tell one. Sometimes Shawn would call and ask for assistance. I wasn't the one that needed a phone call. I knew Shawn's number. Oftentimes, I knew where to find him. There had been a shooting in the city of Auburn. The sheriff may remember this as well. All three of us ended up being there. You guys were looking for someone in the city. I showed up there and come to find out you have like this little forest in the city. I thought it was the city, but it was a little rural area within the city on the west end. And I said, "Hey, I got a helicopter, guys. Can I bring the helicopter?" And they said, "No, we're all set." So I waited a little while, and I volunteered the helicopter again. And they go, "No, no, we're all set." But I just called for the helicopter because we can do that. So finally, they said, "Okay, bring your helicopter." So the helicopter, you can hear the thump, 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 as the helicopter shows up. And I guess Shawn realized at that point he was getting it whether or not he wanted it. Do you remember what you said as the helicopter showed up? "Make something happen." And of course, he said that to me hoping that nothing would happen because he wants to catch the bad guy, I want to catch the bad guy. So what happened right after you said, "Make something happen"? I'll tell the story. Because who wants you to screw it up? One of the SWAT guys, I mean, we have troopers around it, and then the SWAT from the sheriff's department and the PD around it, and someone says, "Movement in the woods." And so, of course, I looked over at Shawn, I get a little grin. Couple minutes later, one in custody. So I'm going to take credit for the helicopter forcing this guy to move, and then Shawn being able to take credit for catching him. And then, of course, so good at that point, I just asked Shawn, "Anything else we can do for you?" But Shawn, your ability to include the state police, let us come in and help you once in a while, as well as the help you gave us outside, and I saw you do the same thing with the sheriff's department and multitude of other agencies, obviously allowed for a much better job to be done in the city of Auburn. The people of City Auburn should be very thankful for what you did the last five years. And then before that, again, thank you so much for being my friend. It was great to be able to call you, ask you questions, and bounce stuff off of you. Thank you very much.
Checks in the mail. Next, I'd like to introduce a good friend of Chief Butler's, myself, retired police chief Gary Janata. Chief? Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilors, City Manager, Mr. Mason. I appreciate the invitation to come here tonight and speak. I'm going to give you a little bit different perspective, though. You've heard a lot of great things about Shawn and everything that he's accomplished, and they're all true and then some. Shawn was seven years old when I was hired at the Auburn Police Department as a police Promoted to Chief in 96, Shawn was part of a group of recruits, the first group of recruits that we were allowed to hire to fill the depleted ranks of the Police Department. After an exhaustive background investigation, criminal checks, it was my duty to take everything, make a decision who we were going to offer employment to and who we weren't. I brought the files home one night, and I'm sitting at the kitchen table going over everything, and my wife, who is a Port Byron math teacher, looks over my shoulder and says, "I know him." I said, "You know who? Shawn Butler. He's a good kid. He's attentive, he's thorough." I says, "Well, okay, all right, his background's clean." So we offered him the position. Him and about four other officers that we employed over the course of the years, who all turned out to be great, not to reach the level of success that Shawn did, but they all turned out to be good police officers. As you heard, Shawn rose through the ranks, patrolman, sergeant, lieutenant, and now He had some challenging times, probably the most challenging time is when he was tasked to run our Detective Bureau. He sat in my office and said, "What am I going to do? You got all these old detectives up there, they're not going to listen to me." I said, "Well, it's your job to win them over and show them you know what you're doing, you're good at what you do, you know what you're doing. Just explain it all to them," I said, "they'll be fine." He eventually won them over, and they looked to him for the leadership that he provided. Shawn made a great friend up there, one that we miss every day. He also led the investigations of several very heinous crimes, of which he tapped the New York State Police and the Cugea County Sheriff's Office to come and assist us with these investigations. Shawn is very good at reaching out and asking for help. There's two things when you're the leader of a police agency that you do before you retire. One is you groom your successor. And the other is you make your department and your community better than it was when you walked in. Shawn, you've accomplished that. I'm proud to say I'm your friend, I respect you as a Police Chief, and I know that you're well-respected across the state. I commend you on your accomplishments, and I wish you well on your future endeavors. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Chief Steve Rutano, Towne Cicero Police Department, representing the Central New York Chapter of the New York State Association of Chiefs of Police. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilor, for allowing me the opportunity to represent Central Chiefs. Shawn, we do have a gift for you, but we're going to give it to you at your retirement party, so you can think for a couple of weeks what it might be. So the invitation or the email that I received said, "Be brief," so I can wrap it up pretty quick, that Chief Butler, he's a pretty cool guy. But seriously, though, Chief Butler took over President of Central Chiefs back in March of 2020 with little notice to prepare for the position. Shawn stepped right up to the plate without hesitation. I happened to be the treasurer at the time for nine years. I'm the one who made the motion and the recommendation that Shawn Butler take over as President of Central Chiefs. Little did I know, he was only going to be there for a short period of time because he didn't tell anybody that he planned on retiring. So what goes around comes around. When he retired, he nominated me to be President. So, thanks, Shawn. I owe you one for that one. When it comes to knowledge, skills, and the ability to embody leadership qualities, Chief Butler clearly had the tools and resources to lead the Central New York Association of Chiefs of Police, which consists of 11 counties. During his time as President, I noted the following qualities about Chief Butler, and I know all these qualities made him a successful Police Chief and clearly the President of Central Chiefs. Just to name a few of them, a few of his qualities which have already been mentioned, his attention to detail, he's an active listener for all the elderly chiefs out there, including sheriffs and troopers that are members of our association, he's resourceful, his integrity is above and beyond, he's extremely organized, he's got a little humor to him, he's a people person, and good leaders cultivate good followers. And most important, his friendship to me and the other members of Central New York Association of Chiefs of Police. One of the most important things that Chief Butler did, in my eyes, is I've run our awards banquet for numerous years, which represents law enforcement and also civilians for heroic actions, commendations that they've done throughout the year, and it's grown to be one of the premier awards banquets for law enforcement throughout Central New York and probably New York State. Chief Butler used his abilities to write a letter for a donation, and we were recently advised that we're receiving a donation, the largest donation ever that we've ever received for Central New Yorks, to support our awards program, which will be held on October 4th. And we could not do this and recognize these other law enforcement officials and civilians without this donation. So Shawn, thank you so much. You're going to be missed. We're going to miss those emails coming through at 27 a day, but you're definitely going to be big shoes do or foul. Again, thanks for nominating me, I appreciate it. And we'll see you in a couple of weeks at your retirement party.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mr. Tom Hague, representing Congressman John Kacko's office.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council for inviting the Congressman's office to attend tonight. Unfortunately, Congressman Kacko was unable to attend, but he did ask me to attend in his place and present to Chief Butler a statement in the Congressional Record honoring his career. So for brevity's sake, I'll only read the last line because I think it summarizes the whole thing pretty well. Madam Speaker, I ask that my colleague in the House join me in honoring the retirement of Chief Butler. For the entirety of his career, he has served with the utmost integrity and has proven himself to be an invaluable leader in the Auburn community. I thank Chief Butler for his service and wish him the very best in his retirement. So on behalf of Congressman John Kacko, thank you so much for your service, Chief Butler.
Chief, we're going to put you on the spot, never seen you under pressure. We'd ask for you if you would address everyone, all your friends and everyone here this evening. Please.
So I'm going to try to put a little humor in this so I don't get too emotional, and surprisingly, I do get emotional. Mayor, if you would indulge me with more than three minutes, I'd appreciate it.
Time's up.
Perfect.
Go ahead, please, Chief.
I am truly humbled and quite honestly undeserving of all this fanfare. There are so many people responsible for any of my successes that I've enjoyed over 25 years of service to this community. There have been so many hands lifting me up, and my team are truly the ones who deserve praise, accolades, and recognition. I was just simply one piece of the puzzle that makes up APD. With that said, where has the 25 years gone? I can still remember sitting in the Police Academy and one of our instructors telling us, "Don't blink. Before you know it, it's all going to be over." And now here we are, I'm filled with mixed emotions, excited, happy, anticipatory for what adventures lie ahead for my family and I, but also sad, anxious, and uncertain about what life will look like when I hang up the uniform for the last time. Several years ago, the Deputy Chief and I had the opportunity to travel to San Diego for a police leadership conference. The keynote speaker was someone that I've never heard of before and quickly became a fan of. His name was Simon Sinek, and he introduced me to the term and title of his famous book, Start with Why. Hearing him speak and reading his book put my career and life into perspective. In a powerful way, by begging the question for all of us relative to our career and our life, can we all answer the basic why? Why do we do what we do? What is our cause, our mantra, our purpose in life, our why? Circling back to my career with the City of Auburn, this job has fulfilled everything that I ever hoped that it would. It has been my life's work and has defined me as a person and challenged and pushed me far beyond what I thought was I was personally capable of. My interest in law enforcement started when I was very young. I was always enamored by the imagery of a police officer, what they stood for, the car, the whole aura, and that made up the police officer image. From that point on, and after watching probably every episode of CHIPS and COPS, growing up, my dream was realized and law enforcement was what I wanted to do. I often reflect with anxiety of what I would have been doing if my dream was not fulfilled in 1996, but here we are 25 years later and a lifetime of memories ago, and I would not have changed a thing. Fast forward to 2012, having been on the job for 16 years at the time, I was fortunate to have been given the opportunity to interview for the Chief of Police job after former Chief Gary Janata announced his retirement. At that time, I was a lieutenant assigned to lead our Detective Bureau, and I thought I was ready for this next step. Luckily, I was not selected because, looking back at myself nine years ago, I was not prepared both personally or professionally to lead this department. Though our department struggled during the next four years under a different leadership style, it gave me the opportunity to hone, develop, and mature my leadership skills and the chance that I would be given the opportunity to lead APD again in the future. I returned to college to finish my undergraduate degree. I became heavily involved in volunteering with numerous organizations in our community, and I learned from the experience of what not to do for the sake of our staff and our community. My time serving the City of Auburn has been filled with so many joyous events, but as is the nature of policing, I've seen and felt tragedy as well. Through other people's grief, I've learned new depths of compassion and empathy and service and have made lifelong friends to include Associate Bell families who are both here tonight. Investigating the tragic and untimely deaths of their children changed me as an officer and as a person, and helped me realize what my true purpose was in serving others as a police officer, something that transformed me into the leader I leave here today and what has also defined my why in the profession of policing. Experiences like these, dozens more like them coupled with the amazing support from my family have filled me with memories that will stay with me forever. I would be remiss if I did not specifically thank some very important people in my life that have supported me along the way in attaining this position as Chief of Police while allowing me to serve the City of Auburn for the past 25 years. My wife Lori, the woman that convinced me that I could love and be loved again, she's been my biggest supporter in life. Lori has pushed me to pursue all of my dreams, and without her, me standing here would not have been a reality. For that and so much more, I say thank you and I love you. Our children, Marissa, Tony, who's serving in the US Army, currently stationed at Fort Drum, could not be here, my daughter Emma, my son Ethan. Does everyone know how hard it is to be the child of a cop, let alone the chief? Ask them about growing up in Fort Knox. Seriously, though, thank you for all your love and support and for all, and for all growing up to be amazing, independent, and successful kids. Lori and I could not have asked for anything more from each of you. My family, many of whom are here tonight and some that could not attend. I know what you thought 25 years ago when I became a police officer. You all said to yourselves, "Shawn, a cop? No way." Even though you're still shaking your heads, I thank you all for supporting me through this adventure and being here today. This also includes my extended family, the Wilsons, Marcus, Katrina. Your friendship and support to Lori and I has been invaluable. Deputy Chief Roger Anthony, who unfortunately is not here tonight. If you knew Roger, he's a member guest at Highland. There are priorities in life. Certain things you cannot miss even if it's a downpour outside. But seriously, Roger and I are only separated by six months in service here at APD, and we came up through the ranks side by side. Roger was everything I needed as a friend, a coworker, and a counselor. He always had a knack on how to re-center and get me to see a different perspective relative to any challenge we faced. Nothing rattles him. The world could be collapsing around Roger and you'd never know it. Always calm, cool, collected, that's Roger. So Roger, thank you for, you've been instrumental in my success as well as our departments. Former Chief Gary Janata, thank you for your leadership and seeing something in me when you hired me in 1996 and subsequently promoted me to Patrol Sergeant in 2005, and then again, you didn't learn the first time, to Lieutenant in 2009. You were always willing to listen to my ideas, let me run with many of them. You encouraged my desire to further my leadership trainings as well as explore different aspects of the policing profession. I still question you, how you stayed Police Chief for 16 years, but as you always say, it was easy because you had good people surrounding you. But 16 years, I thank you. Our APD family, the officers, the command staff, professional employees, I know, and you heard some tonight, I know I subjected you to a lot of demands and changes over the past five years, but I'm hopeful you all see the results of your efforts and that the changes were necessary. Our organization, I'm very proud to say, is a revered police department, not only in our community, but our surrounding partner agencies, and that is because of all your hard work, determination, and deliverance of excellence each and every day. Please remember to always be accountable to yourself, those you serve, and continually challenge yourselves to be the very best officers you can be. And always, always remember, never become complacent. Your number one priority is to return to your family at the end of every shift. To my assistant, Chris Wilkinson, a very special thank you for everything you have done for Roger and I, as well as our employees. She is the glue that keeps our organization together, and she is a huge asset, and I thank her for that. To my successor, who I can't name at this time, but as I prepare to pass you the torch that lights and leads the APD organization, I wish you nothing but success and longevity. I am confident in your abilities, your desire to make APD better, and to grow this organization with new ideas. One piece of advice I would have for you is to continue building upon our relationships because, as you know, we, the police, cannot be the solution for all of society's problems. We need to work collaboratively with not only community members, but the many resources we have available here in Cugea County and beyond. You heard that stated many times. This is not always an easy task, but it is a necessity and really is the secret to our department's current successes. And lastly, take care of your people. Without their health and happiness, we cannot care for our community. If you care for them, they will care for you. And remember, I'm always a phone caller, email away, only if I have coverage. To our partner agencies, the Cugea County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Skank, the New York State Police, Major Barry Chase, Captain Dave Stevins, Cugea Counseling Services, Heather Petrus, Auburn Fire Department, Chief Fritz... Petrus, Auburn Fire Department, Chief Fritz, the School District, Nix Ride, CAP, our Courts, EMS, ACH, Harry Tubman, Center for Justice and Peace, Human Rights Commission, these are just a few of our partner agencies in this community. The list is long, but without each of your agencies and your staff, we could never do the great work that we have accomplished by our collective employees, and for that, I thank you all. My fellow City of Auburn employees, especially our department head team, I was blessed to work with this group of professionals, All-Stars, as I like to refer to them. We collaborate every week. We have grown with each other. We have had many successes, and I thank you all for the partnerships and your guidance in leading me as well. Mayor Quill, City Counsel, including former Counselor Carver Hall, I thank you for entrusting me with the opportunity to lead APD into the future, and I thank you for your consistent support, encouragement along the way, and without that, this job would have been 100 times harder. But your faith in me made a world of difference, especially during the last two years when it was popular in some parts of our nation to condemn and dismantle police agencies. Each of you stood steadfast alongside your police department, and for that, we are stronger, better, and more resilient. A special thank you to Counselor Jimmy Genatino, who for over the past five years has become a dear friend and confidant. Thank you also for teaching me everything I never wanted to know about politics.[1045.98][1045.98](Laughter.) And I definitely know what I'm not going to be doing in retirement.[1049.83][1049.83](Laughter.) No offense. City Manager Jeff Diger, who would have ever thought that a fire chief turned city manager, who likes heavy metal music, is a part-time motorhead, would turn out to be one of the very best city managers Auburn has ever had? Your leadership, guidance, mentorship, friendship have been instrumental to my success. I also thank you for believing in me and giving me this opportunity to grow as a person and as a leader, for always being willing to guide me towards the best solution to any problem or question that I laid on your desk, and we know there were lots. The City of Auburn is fortunate to have you steering the ship, and I look forward to watching you grow our city into the future. A firefighter. Who knew?[1100.24][1100.24](Laughter.) Last and absolutely not least, the citizens of Auburn and the place I have raised my family and called home for the past 25 years. There's no other place I would rather to have completed my career as a police officer than here, serving this great community. Auburn is unique. It is historic. It is vibrant. It's alive. And though Lori and I will be leaving to live our next chapter in a warmer climate, we will be back. While we are traveling the country, we will be watching from afar, seeing how our city continues to prosper. We will always be residents of Auburn, and you will always and forever be a place in our heart. In closing, I need to acknowledge a dear friend who was taken from us way too early, Detective Doug Parker. As many of you know, Doug passed away on July 16, 2019, which also marks the final day of service for me with APD. I miss Doug every day and wish he were here to celebrate with us, but I know he's watching overhead saying, "Good job, kid." So, back to Simon Sinek's book, "Start With Why." For Lori and I, finding our purpose and our why has now transformed into living our why. My career thus far has been about service to others or my purpose and my why in life. Lori and I have also found our why in each other, and we are now ready to explore and live our why with travels, adventures, new experiences, new people, and new ways to serve others. Gone but not forgotten, we thank you and love you all. Thank you.[1201.42][1201.42](Applause.)
For everyone in attendance here this evening, we still have an hour and a half council meeting, so no one, hold your seats. We're not going anywhere just yet. Councillors, I'd like to go roundtable, round robin as we do, and start out with Counselor McCormick. Anything for Chief Butler? Would you like to add?
I can't talk.[1252.83][1252.83](Laughter.) Excuse me. I couldn't top all the different things that people have said are 100% true. I'm going to try not to cry. I have one sentence written down because earlier somebody said, "You were the right person at the right time."[1272.42][1272.42](Coughing.) Excuse me. This is really choked up. I think you've always been the right person, long before you thought you were ready. You've done such a great job, and we are so lucky to have had you. And I'm going to stop now.[1288.58][1288.58](Laughter.) I'm done, but I'm so grateful to have worked with you, and I'm a better person for it, and the city is better for having you as Chief. Thank you.[1301.64][1301.64](Applause.)
Thank you, Mayor.
I have some things I'd like to say, but before I get started, I have one last grievance from Breeze Valano, a major that they wanted me to present to. Anyone who knows Sean Butler knows that this type of event with him at the center of attention really is not his thing. I've taken full advantage of that the last couple of weeks.[1333.83][1333.83](Laughter.) Every time I would hear that somebody RSVP'd, I'd send him a text, a column, say, "Man, that All-Star lineup at City Hall, get ready." And, you know, he sent me a text today, and he said, "Do we really need to do this?" And, you know, I think from what we've heard tonight, the answer is yes. We needed to do this. It's not that he doesn't appreciate the recognition. It's more that he just doesn't feel it is necessary. In his mind, for the last 25 years, he simply went to work every day, did his job protecting and serving the people of Auburn, and did it to the best of his ability. I would argue that is exactly why we are all here tonight, to celebrate and honor the way you did your job with compassion, integrity, decency, empathy, and respect. Through hard work and determination, always keeping these principles in mind, you rose through the ranks of the department you love to the pinnacle, becoming Chief of Police five years ago. As a chief, you have worked tirelessly and selflessly to lead not only your department but our community better than they were when you started. Again, never strained from these principles. I think it is safe to say, mission accomplished. Under your watch, the motto of the Auburn Police Department became, "Expect Excellence." For many, this may seem lofty or unreasonable, but not for you because you led by example every single day. Simply put, you've been a good cop. Five years ago, when you became chief, we didn't know each other. I think it's safe to say, we were probably the unlikeliest of friends. I was a rookie city counselor and a Democrat. You were a career police officer and not a Democrat.[1431.37][1431.37](Laughter.) You had seen many city councils come and go, and we'll just leave that at that. Anyway, there was a point in time a few years back when you reached out and offered your friendship at a point in time when I really needed it, and I will forever be grateful for that. I quickly realized that you were someone who I could count on for advice and guidance. I could bounce ideas off of you, no matter how crazy they were. On the rare occasion that I may have overreacted to something, you weren't shy about telling me, even if it was through text message during a city council meeting.[1465.51][1465.51](Laughter.) Lori, Emma, Ethan, Marissa, and Tony, thank you for sharing Sean with us. I know you have all sacrificed much, and it is truly appreciated. I also want to thank you all for welcoming me into the fold. Emma, I will miss your spirited political debates and frequent wins against your father. Chief, congratulations on a successful career. Thank you for your unwavering service and dedication to the people of Auburn. Thank you for your friendship. I wish you much happiness and good health. There will always be a stool at Tinkers for you on Friday. Enjoy the next chapter. You've earned it.[1501.83][1501.83](Applause.)
Counselor, please.
Chief, it has been an honor and privilege to work with you as Police Chief. I know you are retired, but I hope that your role as a leader and a teacher are far from over. I also know that with your professional experience, your life experience, your FBI training, and your master's degree from University of San Diego, it is my hope that you will take the opportunity to share this with future generations of public servants and law enforcement officers. Thank you for your service, and I know you will continue in some way to improve the community where you and Lori live.[1551.53][1551.53](Applause.)
Chief, I'm going to be brief. I want to get home. My son's got one at bat tonight, so I want to head out.[1574.83][1574.83](Laughter.) I just want to thank you for all your hard work. You did a great job, and happy retirement to you and your family. Thank you.[1582.14][1582.14](Applause.)
Chief, many years ago, I was fire chief, and our mutual friend back in the corner was the police chief. And Gary had an uncanny sense when something was amiss. He'd come wandering over, and we'd sit in the office and talk and talk things through, and what's wrong with my department, what's wrong with his department. But I always turned back to Sean Butler. So, I heard about Sean Butler for two months. Finally, I says, "Who the heck is Sean Butler?" At that time, you were one of the new hires. Gary was very, very high on you, and that's understating what he was. He really had a lot of faith and respect and knew you were going many, many steps higher. He was totally correct. In fact, some of this conversation, when he left, I would go out and see if you were walking down the outlet on top of the water or something.[1646.14][1646.14](Laughter.) That's for your retirement days, okay?[1649.75][1649.75](Laughter.) But in my mind, you exemplify what a citizen of Auburn, a police officer, a police chief represents to our community. If you look around this room, these folks are here because they wanted to be here. They think the world of you, as I do, and I know all of council members. So, Lori, Lori worked with me as the first mayor. She brought me a long way. Ran this polishing off the rough edges. Lori, that you worked on for so many years. But I wish to both you and your families a long, happy retirement, and in all sincerity, do what you think is right. You have a good head on your shoulders, and Lori will always tell you if you don't have it on straight that day. But I wish you well, and say hello to your family members that could not be present today. So, thank you very much.[1702.53][1702.53](Applause.) So, at this point, two items for counsel, if we may. We have a presentation for Chief Butler. If you'll meet me at the rail. But after that, I would request that we adjourn for the evening. There's not a lot on the agenda. We could pick up next week. We've got to get to the ballgame. I understand that. So, would that be agreeable, counsel?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Very good. So, councillor, would you meet me at the rail, please?[1731.14][1731.14](Counselling voice) This is Chief Officer Martin. Please Chief Sean Butler is here by
present with his weakness in 25 years, dedicated service to the City of Auburn Department. Outstanding commitment, tireless devotion, free armed state, and the Auburn Police Department of excellence. Police officer in life, 1596, charged in September 1st, 2005, and 10 March 3rd, 2008, and 15 June 2006. Best wishes, and thank you. And then, same day, July, all of us, thank you.[1788.14][1788.14](Applause.)